...filled with garbage, tipped over, causing sidewalk congestion and just plain eyesores. Many of them aren't even for newspapers but promotions or commercial enterprises. Until now, the city hasn't had many tools to address this issue because the regulations don't empower them to. We've had walkthroughs with the Department of Transportation on many of the avenues in our district, and the city says they're really limited in what they can do when these newspaper boxes are not well-maintained. So today, we, the City Council, are passing legislation that will clarify and strengthen the regulations regarding the sighting, design, and the maintenance of sidewalk news racks. We are empowering the Department of Transportation to develop standards regarding the manner in which news racks can be placed or installed. It gives them the ability to create standards of shape, design, appearance. It clarifies that they can't be used just for advertising or promotional purposes, and it also requires them to affix their name, address, telephone number, and email address in a readily visible location on the news racks so we know who to contact when they're not being well-maintained. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for her support, as well as Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, the Chair of the Committee on Transportation, prime cosponsor of this legislation, Sandra Ohng, and the many community organizations and residents who've helped make this possible. Together, we are going to continue working to make our communities better for New Yorkers in ways large and small.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Botcher. Introduction 138, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would expand the council's organic waste diversion efforts, specifically in parks, by requiring the Department of Parks and Recreation to establish composting facilities for plant waste within at least two parks in each borough by July 2026, at least three parks in each borough by July 2027, and at least five parks in each borough by July 2028. I invite Councilmember Brewer to talk about her bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is mostly because Riverside Park, under the Riverside Park Conservancy, has what we hope exists per what the Speaker just indicated. In that particular park, there are about four or five large containers. Obviously, on a regular basis, they take the leaves and other debris from the park, mulch it, make it into compost with solar. There is no electrical need at all, and that is put back into the park. And that's what we're aiming for with this legislation. I think it's very exciting because most parks don't have such a facility, and it will hopefully reduce the amount of organic waste sent to landfills, improve soil health, decrease greenhouse gas emissions, create green jobs in each borough, as staff will be needed to operate the composting sites. I think you heard the deadlines that are taking place, and I think that as we are trying in this world to have a cleaner, safer, healthier city and planet, it'll make a big difference. I do want to thank, obviously, the Speaker. I want to thank Chair of the Parks Committee, Shaker Krishnan, the Compost Coalition, including Eric Goldstein of NRDC, Justin Green of Big Reuse, and all the others who support it, particularly Schuler Pooter, and the wonderful Cynthia Hornig from my office, who made this possible. Thank you very much. Yay, compost!
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brewer. Next is Introduction 1088A, my bill, to establish a charter revision commission that prioritizes improving city government and transparency. The commission would consist of seventeen members appointed by the Speaker, Mayor, public advocate, comptroller, and all five borough presidents. Registered lobbyists would be ineligible to serve on the commission. The commission would be required to conduct an extensive outreach campaign to solicit ideas from civic and community leaders and encourage the public to participate in the hearing process. In contrast to the mayor's commission that rushed the completion of the process in less than two months, the proposed legislation would provide at least eight months for the commission's work before its earliest submission of proposals for a general election in 2025, and up to twenty months for the 2026 general election. Through an open, transparent, and inclusive process, it will actively seek input from across communities, ensuring that proposed changes to the city charter reflect the needs and priorities of the public. This commission will have the time and mandate to focus on the long-term well-being of the city, not just short-term political gains of any current office holder. The main goal of this commission is to rebuild New Yorkers' confidence in city government and reestablish model standards for these commissions. And finally, Introduction 360A, also known as the Fair Act, sponsored by Councilmember Chiose, would ensure that renters are not forced to pay a fee for the services of a real estate broker they did not hire. It would prohibit brokers from passing their fee onto tenants when the broker is exclusively representing the landlord's interests. Landlords or their agents would be required to disclose the fees that the tenant must pay in their listings and rental agreements. The Department of Consumer and Worker Protection would enforce this bill and would conduct education and outreach. Any person who violates this bill would be subject to a civil penalty or civil action. I now invite the man of the hour, Councilmember Chiose, to the podium to discuss his legislation.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure a lot of people in this room have had to pay a broker fee before, so I hope this is an exciting day for everyone here. Today is the culmination of over a year and a half of work. My team and I collaborated with renters, council members, lawyers, workers, brokers, and so many more individuals and groups to create this piece of legislation. We built a coalition spanning the five burrows who recognize the gravity of the housing crisis we face and are committed to finally bringing fairness to apartment rental expenses. The Fair Act is simple. It requires that whoever hires a broker in a rental transaction, whether landlord or tenant, pays a broker fee. In too many millions of cases across our city, in decades of history, tenants have been forced to hand over thousands of dollars in fees to brokers they never hired nor wanted. The harm of this practice cannot be overstated. Families seeking to grow forego having children because they can't afford to move into a larger place. Children aging out of their parents' homes are pushed into different neighborhoods or even cities because they can't afford to rent an apartment in their own community. Workers are unable to live near their jobs. Victims are unable to leave domestic abuse. People are unable to bring their talent and drive to our amazing city because of forced broker fees. Today, we end that cruel and archaic practice. I want to thank Speaker Adams for making this possible. I know that this council is truly taking this housing crisis seriously, as well as advocacy groups, unions, my colleagues, and everyone who got us to this moment. Today is a win for the people of New York as we make official what has long been common sense: you should get what you pay for and pay for what you get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ose. And that concludes our stated agenda. And with that, we will take on-topic questions first.
Okay, on topic bills, let's start with you.
I guess this could be for the Speaker and the Councilmember. On the Fair Act, are you expecting a veto-proof majority? And are you concerned that the mayor is going to veto the bill?
We hope for a veto-proof majority as far as the mayor's plan. This bill was worked out with the administration, with no objection from the administration. So we are hoping to proceed with this legislation, go forward in a positive way for the people.
Hi, Speaker. This is actually on your bill. They're suggesting that the mayor is going to establish his own Charter Revision Commission again next year, which would supersede councils as things stand. I know that there's legislation in the state at the moment, but how will you fight the likelihood of this happening in a repeat of the November ballot?
Well, you know, that's a hypothetical situation, but you know, charter revision commissions are very serious undertakings. They're not political weapons, and they shouldn't be misused that way. So the scenario that you're presenting tells me that that would be political weaponization, you know, of a commission. And it's unfortunate that in the past, you know, our mayor has abused his authority to do just that last summer. It would be a grave mistake for the mayor to attempt to repeat an abusive and undemocratic use of another charter revision commission that is entirely self-serving, and I think that he'd face the consequences of the voters. The voters are advised now, they're aware of what happened last summer, and, you know, the proposals that were put forward a couple of weeks ago were approved with the lowest margins in at least fifteen years of silly ballot proposals because the information, you know, was not all there, and the language used was very misleading. So I think it would be a mistake, and I would hope that that mistake would not be repeated.
I'm a broker bill. Given your comments that you worked through this bill with the administration, were you surprised by the mayor's comments yesterday, basically throwing cold water on the bill and echoing the bill's city industries criticism?
I was surprised. This bill, you know, like I said, we worked together with the administration with this bill, and I can't interpret what the mayor is saying, but the administration was a part of the negotiations on this bill. They raised no major issues, and I haven't heard from the mayor personally on it. So yes, I was surprised.
Yeah, given the mayor's comments yesterday, are you prepared to override any potential veto?
This bill is very significant and important to this council, and the council would be prepared to meet any negative response from the administration with regard to passing this legislation.
Yeah, so this is kind of the on-topic, a little off-topic. So we saw President Trump...
He could just on the bills.
Okay, it's on the bill. And you could throw me out, it'd be terrible.
We'd never throw you out, Bob.
We don't do that. So we saw that President Trump made inroads in deeply blue areas of New York City, and exit polls showed that the economy kept showing up, feeling that the professional Democratic Party out of Washington didn't really hear people when they talked about the trouble of the economy and the problems they were having. It was kind of like, well, you just don't understand the economy, this is very common. Doesn't this kind of bill speak exactly to those kinds of anxieties? Because it does trap people in the inability to move forward with their lives, only serving hidden capital interests that we've seen a concentration of wealth that's unprecedented. Isn't this kind of bill addressing exactly that kind of problem?
Which bill are you referring to?
The Fair Bill, the issue of the broker...
The Fair Act. I would agree with you that this bill certainly does penetrate a lot of those concerns about New York City being unaffordable. I think that the council members' legislation will impact in a great way the needs of people that want to stay in New York, the needs of people that want to move to New York. Councilmember, I don't know if you want to add?
Sure. Yeah, I think one of the issues that were addressed after this election were that Democrats aren't addressing economic issues, and this council has been, and I think this is a prime example of that. Passing the Fair Act would save tenants thousands of dollars every single year. It almost costs over $10,000 upfront to move into a new apartment in the city, and over half of that is a broker fee. Changing this law or putting this law into action and requiring that whoever hires the broker pays the fee will, again, put money back into the pockets of New Yorkers and showing that Democrats do deliver.
Thank you.
Speaker, or Councilman, what do you think is the most persuasive critique of the broker bill in which you respond to it?
The most persuasive critique? Chi, I'm going to let you do this. You've been doing this.
Sure. I don't think any of them are persuasive, and that's why we're here to pass the bill today.
Do you think nothing is persuasive, that they can, that they would argue?
Nope. This bill is common sense. It replicates how every other transaction exists in this country. Whatever you hire or order, you pay for.
Hi, Councilmember. Have you spoken with the mayor since his comments yesterday?
No.
And then...
Next question.
You know, there was one argument just about, like, small landlords, you know, just not being able to maybe put up pictures or something on their website just about the apartment.
Yeah.
What's your response to that?
Absolutely. I think that's baloney, right? There's an argument that so many apartments will go offline if this bill passes. In what world do landlords not want to fill their homes with tenants? That would be losing money every single month. Zillow, StreetEasy, these apps and websites are very easy to use in terms of listing an apartment, and I do believe that landlords already do that today. In addition to that, and the response to how this impacts small landlords, listen, I hired a broker myself. I'm not anti-broker. I'm anti-forcing people to pay for something they didn't hire. And my broker found me a home where I have a small landlord. So there are going to be some instances where when tenants hire a broker, they'll still be moving into a small landlord's apartment, which will not affect them negatively.
I'm sorry, one more question. When this bill passes, does it go into effect?
Absolutely. So if the mayor signs it within the window of thirty days, then the second he signs it, 180 days after that. If he doesn't sign it, then there's a thirty-day wait period, and then after that, 100 days after that.
I think on the bills, Jen, we'll do you off-topic.
Hi, Speaker. Thanks, how are you?
Hi. Good to see you.
So one follow-up on the mayor's comments on immigration and the incumbent Trump administration yesterday. After no small amount of back and forth with the press, he made a clear statement, he does not favor mass deportation. But after that, he made a note of other comments. I'm hoping to get a response, including that he wants to sit down and figure out what he could do as far as immigration and deportations with the Trump administration. And then also, a hypothetical was laid out for him where ICE shows up to Rikers, what do you do? And he said, "I worked that through on a case-by-case basis." Does any of that rhetoric concern you? Are you thinking about legislating around the issue of further strengthening sanctuary city status in New York?
Thank you for the questions. We have a lot of concern when it comes to the former president/future president's work for the nation, most critically for New York. As far as the immigration, we are, again, we are very concerned about what we hear. I, you know, like the mayor, am not obviously supportive of, you know, the deportation issues around. And, you know, the sanctuary city information remains as is. We have laws that, you know, that protect individuals. We are a sanctuary city. We will remain a sanctuary city. And the last part was, you referenced the mayor saying something about Rikers and ICE.
Yes, I'm happy to repeat. He was offered the hypothetical, well, if federal agents, namely ICE, show up to Rikers and say, "We want these people," what do you do? And he said, "We'll have to work through those situations on a case-by-case basis." What are your thoughts on that?
I, you know, again, that, to me, that's a bit of a reach in a hypothetical scenario, not saying that it's impossible, but I can't really address it. It's a hypothetical situation. If anything like that, you know, were ever to be realistic, the council would have to take a look at policy and the provision of policy around it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Speaker.
Hi, Kelly.
For follow-up on that. So are you saying that the council is not having any conversations right now about sanctuary city laws? Is that not something that you guys are preparing for? And then I also wanted to ask you, you know, Trump made these gains in a couple of boroughs, in the five boroughs, when it came to the election. Mayor Adams said yesterday it was because the Democratic Party is moving more to the left and not in line with these working class issues. What are your thoughts about that? And, you know, in general, Trump making gains and the mayor saying that it's the progressive wing of the party that's keeping it back?
Thank you for the question. With regard to sanctuary city status, again, you know, the council's not going to be a part of facilitating a Trump administration's misguided efforts to sow chaos and fear in our city. We're going to defend against that because it will definitely make the city less safe. We are not considering any changes to the law at this time. There's been a lot of misinformation around sanctuary city, and there are provisions within that law that have been misrepresented. As far as the election itself, again, I'm disappointed, obviously. Some of you know that I did some traveling, so I am disappointed in the outcome. But, you know, we, we're resilient. We are a resilient nation. I'm not going to be the one that places blame on one party, on one demographic, on one age group. That's not what we do. I think that there are lessons to be learned through this election, and the thing that I don't think that folks are talking about enough is that folks didn't get up off the couch. So we're looking at the numbers of the folks that came out, but we're not looking at the numbers of the folks that chose not to come out. And for me, that is most telling.
So, Michelle?
Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
How are you?
Good.
So I guess just to follow up on that a little bit more, I understand that you're not looking specifically at the sanctuary city's angle as far as the council's curtain that, but has there been any conversation, or is the council looking at anything specific as far as what to do or anything to do legislatively prior to the new Trump administration coming in, for any other areas like, you know, environmental laws, anything like that? And then my second question is, I wanted to ask about the ballot proposals that passed last week. I know that three and four directly impact how the council passes laws, especially with regards to home safety legislation. Do you have any plan as to how to navigate that?
Yeah, I'll take your first question first, with regard to the Trump administration, the sanctuary laws, et cetera, first. With everything that's gone on and everything that we've been talking about, there's been relatively, really, no time. We will be speaking about all of the things that we face as far as the new administration. So we will be taking a look at that. As far as the ballot proposals, we are working through how the council is going to navigate through the proposals that were passed, specifically the ones that I consider to be totally under mayoral control at this time. And we will be working through those things through our Legislative Division and our Finance Division. We will work through all of it, and we are going to, you know, solidify what we normally do. We are going to comply as best we can. I think that, in all honesty, that these proposals are going to be stressful on both sides of City Hall.
Okay, so I want to go to Catherine, and then to Michael Rassiter.
Can you provide an update on negotiations and, yes, because, you know, changes we got forward, you know, that are...
Well, the negotiations are ongoing. It's complicated, and we are working through a range of concerns that we heard from a fourteen-hour hearing. And we are still, you know, putting all of that together. We are, you know, as a council, we are seeking to address those items on a holistic approach to that with, of course, incorporating the city for all within the zoning reform. We want affordability for, you know, for renters, for homeowners, and infrastructure, and some other things also. So these are some issues that we've got to tackle through, we've got to work through it, and we're working through it pretty much on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to finish with you two, please, a quick... Go ahead. Yeah, so it's a quick two-parter. I guess Minority Leader Ken Jeffries pointed out that it's not really a mandate, since in New York State, you picked up three, you flipped three, where you know how Democrats were, there were Republicans. And more broadly, it's very narrow in the House and the Senate, elected, data, how narrow is it? So it is not quite that. So I'm just wondering if it's kind of like a major reset, and if part of your responsibilities now in the council is to act as the eyes and ears to hold agencies accountable as we go through this difficult time in terms of issue of flight, you know, there's concerns expressed. Do immigrant households stop sending children to school? This happened last time with President Trump. Do we see victims of...
Do we see victims of domestic violence that may have problems with their status not coming forward to the police? That also happened before. Young people, children not getting inoculated as required. Are those the kinds of granular things in our lifestyle that you should be keeping an eye on?
Thank you for the question. I think we're going to be taking a look at everything comprehensively. We know, just like you said, Bob, we know what we have gone through, the negative impact that this past administration, now future administration, we know the impacts to the people of the city, and we're going to take a look at, a hard look at analyzing what we were up against then, how we came through those things, quite frankly, a lot of different ways triumphantly, and how we need to replicate some of those same behaviors going forward, plus the additional potential hardship that we are facing now that we're looking at the administration being put together very quickly, the individuals that are being placed very quickly, and some of the things in those individuals' paths that may negatively impact our New Yorkers. Yeah.
Speaker, two questions. First, what specifically do you want the mayor to be doing regarding shielding migrants from deportation? And two, is there any crime, I want you to list the crime if there is, that you think should subject a noncitizen to deportation?
Is there any crime that I, well, the issue of criminality, of course, is a very serious one, and is there any crime? Crime is crime. People need to be prosecuted for crime. I think that, asking if there is any crime, I think that individuals that commit crimes should be prosecuted for that.
Should be deported for any crime? Is there any crime you could commit where you think that a noncitizen should be kicked out of the country?
Again, crime is crime. We will leave that up to the law enforcement experts that handle crime. As far as deportation is concerned, once we start talking about deportation, we're talking about it on a large scale, and I happen to think that once we start doing that, we start subjecting a lot of people that may possibly be caught up into issues of quote-unquote "massive deportations" without necessarily having all of the facts intact.
The first question about what the mayor should be doing, if anything, right now, specifically to shield migrants from deportation?
Shielding migrants, I'm going to leave that up to the mayor. I don't have any suggestions for him as far as shielding. I will only suggest that there is an effort to maintain communication with the new administration as best he can. Thank you. Thank you.